This meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. The first item on our agenda is to
apologize.
To consider the approval of minutes for July 21st, 2021. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for July say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, moving on. The first item, the first case number is RP 2021-005. Applicant Baron Stark, engineer is representing 555 Dublin Avenue LLC, is requesting a replat of property located at 555 Dublin, parcel R 7 3140 of City Edition, thank you, block 72 and block 73 of the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary replat of two parcels. Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yes ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant has submitted a preliminary plat along with the appropriate semittals, which are currently under review by staff. We've been working with the developer for a couple of weeks now and the project that they're going to be bringing to our community is a multifamily development at the specified location. We have some maps included in the staff report. And we also have the R3 zoning requirements. This property is already zoned R3. Much of their surrounding area is also zoned R3 multifamily. But tonight is specifically in regards to the replat. And as you know, state law requires that if the replat meets all the conditions set forth by the community and the plat requirements of the county, that we are charged to approve the replat. So with that ma'am, Madam Chair, I know we have several folks that are here tonight to speak regarding this particular replat, but I just want to remind the commission and the public that this is a replat case and not a rezoning case. Also, in the packet, we have the replat application. We have a map. And if you aren't able to follow along with me on your devices, I have it projected behind us, which is not, I realize, the most convenient, but the audience can see. We do have the map showing the location with the street names. And then we have the parcel maps as well that we typically include for your review. And then also ma'am, we have the tree survey, which was submitted by the developer as part of their packet. And then a letter of authorization, which we have included. And then finally, this is a copy of the plat that was recently submitted. Couple of updates at our request, staff request. Staff believes this plat meets all the requirements and we would recommend approval of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Okay, before I open a public hearing, let me just reiterate what Steve just said, which is, I know you all are concerned about putting a lot of apartments there. We don't have any leeway to change that R3 zoning. It is R3 right now. We are not changing the zoning. That's what it currently is. All this is, is just about how the land is divided. And by law, we have to follow the rules. So we, as a group, do not have the power to stop any apartments from going in there. So is that clear to everybody? So given, not clear?
No.
Okay. Currently, the land is zoned R3. So everything in our city, oh, it's been zoned that way.
It's been zoned R3 for many years.
And as neighbors, we are, as people in that neighborhood, we don't have the opportunity to know when they zone it? I don't know.
It's always been R3. Yeah. It's always been, so your land, if you're right, if you were, if, can we pull up the zoning, the current zoning map?
Yes ma'am.
So that you can see where you are, where you live and what your current zoning is.
I'm just running on the end of Mesquite.
Okay, so all of that pink is R3, correct?
Yes ma'am.
No, is that not the zoning?
No, yes.
No, that's the wrong one.
So my house is zoned for business?
This map. Oh, I'm sorry. 555 Dublin parcel.
So current zoning.
Pink is multifamily.
Pink is multifamily.
The property outlined in blue is the property in question.
Is the parcel. But all of that, regardless of whether it's single-family homes, within R3, you can have single-family homes. You can have apartments, you can have townhomes. Within R3, it's everything.
I didn't know that.
So, yeah, yeah, of course. I mean, why would you? So that land is already R3. We cannot change it. And it has, it has been R3 for some time, as is your land. So we, as a group, cannot say, cannot do anything about that, if that's clear. So I don't know if that changes anybody's minds in terms of talking with us tonight, but I just wanted to make it clear, we are not, we are not doing anything with zoning. This is strictly about how the land is divided and they are just the laws that we have to follow. So if Steve Killen is saying they are following all the rules, then we're going to approve that plat. Does that make sense? Okay, so with that.
My question is, what's going to be the main interest of those apartments?
Okay, let me go ahead and open a public hearing and then people who wish to speak can do so, okay? Unless, is the, is the developer here?
The developer is here ma'am. Mr. Kunkel.
Mr. Kunkel?
I'm sorry.
No, Mr.
Will Schooner?
Will Schooner?
Would you, would you like to explain your development before we open the public hearing?
And also Mr. Stark.
Okay. If you'd come up to the podium, please, and state your name and your address and just give a brief overview for the people here so that they can understand.
Yes ma'am, absolutely. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I think Steve did a great job of summing up what we're looking at doing here. Essentially, we're taking this lot, which is existing a portion of two lots, and we're going to replat it into one. And that's what we're looking at doing with this replat.
Okay, and do you have, for the development that you're putting in, do you have any further ideas what you're doing there? Or you're not even at that stage yet?
We do. We, we're pretty far along in our design. We have quite a bit of the design nailed down at this time. Yes ma'am.
Okay.
So I believe you're looking at 83 units on the property, if I recall correctly?
Yes, so our current building count would be 23 units. 23 buildings.
23 buildings?
Yes, sir.
And how many, how many rooms? I know that's a question that's being presented.
Yeah, the bed count will be approximately 250.
Okay. And in terms of egress and ingress into that, is it just that one little area on Dublin Street?
The entrance to the proposed, yeah, yes ma'am. The entrance to the proposed development will be off of Dublin.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so that said, just to give you all a little more information, if any, I'm going to open the public hearing now. If anybody wishes to speak for this, well, it's, again, it's about a replat. So if you wish to speak for the replat, you may come to the podium now. If you wish to speak against the replat, and I have some papers here, y'all might have changed your mind knowing what you now know, but you're welcome to come and speak if you wish. And if you could state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Yes ma'am, my name is Noni Castleman-Reed. I have two adjacent properties, 1008, 1008 Count Street and 601 Alexander are the properties that are adjacent. What I'm concerned about most is the safety. So many cars and more people possibly than parking, the bottleneck in the Dublin and Count Street. And the safety, like for emergency vehicles, ambulances, police, fire trucks, who's going to be responsible for all that liability? Such a bottleneck and all the traffic. And that just really scares me and that's, my main concern is the safety. That, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And again, as I've said before, we have no leeway on this, but I know you wanted to voice your concerns, so thank you for doing so. Does anybody else wish to speak? Again, you have three minutes and please state your name and address.
I'm Lorena Elston and I live at 925 Mesquite Street. And my question is, to this fellow right here, is where, I don't understand replat. What are the plots that are replating?
Okay, let's, you state your question and then when we close the hearing, we'll bring it back to him. So just state your specific question.
What a replat, what?
What is replat?
Yeah, what's, what area on the map?
Like what specifically was, was the land before? So if Steve could pull up the map.
Yes ma'am.
I mean, I know it's within 200 feet of my home, but I'd like to know what a replat.
And Steve might be able to answer that.
So ma'am, if you look at the area outlined in blue, that's the property that is being replatted. This property has been surveyed and resurveyed multiple times.
Well, in conjunction to that, where is my house? Where's 925 Mesquite? It's in the top, oh, okay, so it's over there.
Yes ma'am.
That little point coming off the.
Yes, I'm right on the very end.
In the middle of the point.
Can you zoom into those house numbers?
There it is, right over there.
So where am I at, I'm at 490 Dublin, right across the street.
Once again, we, the replat is, because the property has been surveyed, but it has not recently been replatted. So we're replating the two parcels into one parcel to allow the development on a single track. The county had already recognized this as a single parcel track. The track's already in R3 zoning. So what we're doing is basically recording a plat with the county to show that it's owned by one, one person and that it's, this is the configuration of the property. And so with this plat, what it does is we make sure that their site plan will allow for the proper easements and the proper setbacks and we make sure that it meets all the R3 zoning requirements when the development comes. So that's part of what a plat is for, is to give us the dimensions of the property so we know how we can allow the development to occur. So the R3 question has already been resolved.
Well, I'm not asking about the R3. I understand that. I was under, just wondering what proper things are being replatted.
For city staff and for the commission, our job is to make sure that this plat meets all the legal requirements for a replat. And staff's recommendation is that it does meet those legal requirements.
So as long as we understand that, that we're here.
Yeah.
By state law, we have no recourse.
Okay, I appreciate that. Does anybody else wish to speak against this replat? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a, do I have a motion?
I recommend to council to approve RP 2021-005 replat.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this something that, this is a question for Steve, I guess. Is this something that we need to look at as far as traffic or anything? Is that going to be later on?
It's not even part of our review.
That's a question to the chairman's point, maybe not germane to tonight's discussion, but to answer your question, sir, during the development process, the engineer is required to perform a traffic impact analysis if it meets a certain parameter on their assessment. And so that is part of the development process that we will be working with developer on.
Okay.
It is, yeah, sorry. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this preliminary replat, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that moves on to council. Now, for those of you in the area, know that this goes next to council. We only make a recommendation. City council has the final vote upon it. Any questions you'd have? Steve does a great resource. You can get in touch with him if you have any questions about the logistics of how all this happens, okay?
So who did I ask about like the traffic area? We all got kids right there.
Sure. Steve Killen?
Reach out to me, Development Services, please.
I mean, that's a small street. There's only one way in, one way out. There's cars fly through there all day. And then you get off Alexander, fly over to Long Street like it's nothing.
Be glad to visit with any of you. It's called.
There's no stop sign on Mesquite either, like there's supposed to be.
Not everybody got letters either.
Okay, well, like I said, direct your inquiries to him, Development Services, and he will get with you and meet with you and discuss all of your concerns as this development goes forward.
I've talked about so many times, come look over there. There's no, there's no cars flying by there. If my truck gets in, I'm suing somebody.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The assistant city manager right there, you talked to him.
Jason Kidd. Okay, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and move on. Again, reach out to Steve. Okay, so we are going to go ahead and move ahead to case number PD 2021-002. Applicant Reese Flanagan of MMA LLC, representing Troy Kunkel of Cowtown Properties, is requesting a rezone of property located at 525 West Collin, parcel R 33237 of Shepherd and Collins, block six, lots one and two, and A 0032 Blair John of the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas, from industrial to planned development. The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Formal action for the rezone request and the approval of the planned development will be considered at a future meeting. Steve?
Yes ma'am, as you stated, tonight's purpose is to evaluate a conceptual plan. The plan shall contain appropriate information to describe the general land use configuration, the proposed densities or lot sizes, and the proposed amenities or regulations. So our discussion needs to be within those confines. The applicant has an intended project for a townhome development. The concept plan proposes 37 units on 2.65 acres, which is roughly 13.96 units per acre, which meets our lot density. It has 68 parking spaces. Generally, two parking spaces per unit are required. There may be some changes in that ordinance in the near future, but at this current time, it is two, two parking spaces per unit. We have maps included on your staff report. We also have the description of the requested zoning in your packet. So for this being a residential development, there are certain things that the planned development would include. Again, tonight is just a conceptual plan. And if I can back over to another document, we have the application from Troy Kunkel of Cowtown Properties. And he is making the request for this PD consideration. We have a map. And again, I have these on display behind us if it's easier for you to follow. This is basically bordered by Race and Shirley Streets as well as railroad tracks. So just to kind of put a location on where this is located. We have your typical zoning maps included in the packet as well. Property is currently zoned industrial with future land use as industrial as well. And then we have the site plan that was submitted by the developer. And you can see that they have an illustration of what they believe the layout of the units will look like. With the density, of course, it being a PD, typically these lots are required to be 30 by 100 feet in dimension. But since this is a PD request, the commission and the city council have the authority to make some exceptions in that respect. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have questions for Steve? Is the developer with us tonight? Do you have anything that you would like to add to what Steve has said?
No, would you see it?
Yeah, please. And if you could state your name and address.
Yes, Troy Kunkel, 3745 Belair Drive South, Fort Worth, Texas. We just see a real need for Stevenville to have townhomes with garages. We've done some other development here. And just storage and things like that have been kind of messy and they spill out over the parking lot, things like that. And so we were hoping to build some townhomes here that could be for sale or for rent. But the garages were the big things we're trying to break to Stevenville.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick question. So the 37, the six short parking spaces by our standards are two to one. But the, these have garages underneath them. Does that 68 include the garages and then there's extra spices? Or is it all through the facility?
68 parking plus garages. So there is more.
Okay, so there's more to add. What is, did it? These are going to be for rent townhomes or for sale townhomes?
We are planning on putting them up for sale. So families can live in them. I'm sure investors will buy some, and students as well.
But your intent is not to own them and rent them? You're developing, selling them?
I have a question for the developer. Have you done any contact with the railroad? With the Fort Worth and Western Railroad? When I looked at the property today, I noticed that there was a rail crossing adjacent to this where Paddock and Collins and there's four different streets all come together and there are no crossing signals at that crossing.
I think that that's not really what we're looking at right now at this point in the discussion. It's too early. So I think you voiced your concerns, but.
Well, it's just, it has to do with traffic.
Yeah.
And traffic has a, has a bearing on, on design.
Traffic study, I believe, Madam Chair, will be part of the development process. So we're basically just looking at the conceptual plan tonight to make sure that what we see is a development that we can move forward with. Recognizing the traffic is an issue, again, we will look at the, at that part of the puzzle during the development process with the engineer.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak? Well, do we? I mean, this is just a.
It's conceptual plan.
Presentation of a conceptual plan. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this conceptual plan? Please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Douglas Cooper, 519 East Border Street, Arlington, Texas. We're the consultant on the development and just wanted to register our support and let you know we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Appreciate it. Does anybody here wish to speak against this conceptual plan? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, I need a motion.
Is this for all of them?
No, sir, this is.
This is just the one on Collins?
On Collins, that's correct.
Quick question in on this one. Conceptually, this 36 foot, and this is really 30. That's a question for staff.
Question for staff, okay.
This is 38 overall, right? That'd be a variance by three feet? Is that right? I'm not.
Minimum lot dimensions on townhome generally are 30 by 100. So.
Height?
30 wide, 100 deep.
How high can a building go?
The building height is 35 feet.
And this is 38 four, so we'll call 38 in, 35 feet? I'm just trying to make sure we're know well where that we don't get into another monstrosity we conceived coming from Rembury.
That's a good question and I'm wondering if the dormers may have an impact on the height.
Within, that's my only concern.
It's good.
I just want to make sure I'm reading it right.
And again, within the PD, if, if the PD is approved, then those are the type of exceptions that you can make because it is a PD.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Okay, if I could get a motion?
I move that we recommend to council approval for PD 2021-002.
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor, do we even need to do this formal action for the rezone?
There's no action required.
There's no action needed. We don't actually need to vote, right?
If anything, give direction to the developer on anything you might like to see.
Any concerns? So we actually don't need to have a motion?
There's no.
Okay, so, so are concerns registered? Todd's maybe a little concerned that it's tall.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah. Not super tall and Bruce is a little concerned about the traffic. Okay. Okay, so moving on then. Correct, we can put this baby to bed? All right, moving on to case number PD 2021-003. Applicant Reese Flanagan of MMA LLC, representing Troy Kunkel of 598 Westwood LLC, is requesting a rezone of property. Is it a rezone? Yes. Of property located at 817 West Washington, parcel R 29583 of City Edition, block 62, lots 6A71417 of the city of Stevenville, Ehrath County, Texas, from B2 retail and commercial business to planned development. The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Formal action for the rezone request and approval of the planned development will be considered at a future meeting. Steve?
Yes ma'am, and to Commissioner Michael Boy's point earlier, this, this PD. Yes, ma'am, and to Commissioner Michael Boy's point earlier, this, this PD is related to the next three properties. And so to, again, our purpose is to evaluate the conceptual plan, make sure that the land use configuration, proposed density or lot sizes, amenities and regulation are within the confines of the ordinance. We have maps again, and in your packet, this particular, this particular project, again, is for a townhome. It's twenty-three units on point nine four acres, which brings the density to twenty-four point four seven units per acre, has fifty-one parking spaces exceeding the current requirement per unit. We, again, have the planned development information in there for your review and consideration. And then, ma'am, if we can move to the, again, we have the application included in your packet. We have a map, again, that's on your screen, and, or on the screen behind me for your, your reference point, and then, go back. Lost my connection here. Hold on just a second, please. All right, let me jump back. I apologize. So while I'm trying to get back in, this, this again is a PD. We are looking at the number of units mentioned, same business model, I believe, where we're looking to sell the properties individually, and we do have a developer here, I believe, tonight, and almost there. Murphy's Law. It's going along smoothly until now. Pardon me. Thank you, sir. Okay. Sorry about that. So, again, as we have the, the application, we have the map, and then we also have the PD site plan. Get back on track here. This is for the, the property on Washington. Again, it's going to involve three different properties, and three different cases therefore. And this is the diagram of what we believe the, or what the developer is proposing the property will look like. There is a mobile home park behind this property, and they have a, currently they have an easement cutting from Washington Street back to their property, and it appears that the developer has honored that easement in his site plan. So with that, ma'am, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Steve?
I do on the easement. Was that to go through the property in question, or the neighboring property that we'll be discussing in the next?
It, it may be the adjacent property, the one we were looking at. Stand corrected on that, you're correct, but the, just wanted to make the point that there was a concern from the property owner behind them, but I believe that the developer has recognized that and has included that in their site plan.
And then moving the easement to the current property that we're discussing, is that gonna be something that needs to be taken care of on their end?
That would be actually a, if the property owner behind them doesn't have a legally dedicated easement, then that would become a civil issue between the developer and the property behind them. With this, though, I believe they're honoring that, that access with their plan.
Any other questions for Steve?
Ma'am, we do have, Phil had mentioned, we have four of these replats, or rezone to PD. We have a letter of opposition, which is included in your packet. Letter of opposition is from Steenville Mobile Home, as I mentioned earlier, and then we also have a second letter of opposition, which is from a David on the Washington PD, also included in your packet. They have presented several questions, which we will be following up with Ms. Avery.
You'll, you'll contact?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We got those, visit with developer, and, and we will be responding to those questions after this meeting.
Thank you. Okay. The, the developer, would, would you care to speak either? And again, state your name and address for the, for the record.
Yes, Douglas Cooper with MMA, five nineteen East Border Street, Arlington, Texas. And maybe before we get to this specific, specific case, maybe just a point of clarification from, from the planning director. So when we made application for the planned development rezoning, I guess we were under the impression that this hearing, being P and Z, would be making a recommendation of the zoning to city councils. So it sounds like the action that was taken on the previous case was just a, a consideration of, of our concept plan, but we just need to understand...
Yes, sir.
Why there's a next step, or why wasn't this be considered of the zoning hearing for these two properties that we're, we're trying to rezone?
The city board, city ordinance related to PDs in Steenville requires a conceptual plan review first, come to commission, and come back with the planned development, the actual planned development for their review and consideration, which then goes to council. So this meeting is basically just a fact-finding mission, allow the commission to ask you questions, provide any direction to you that they feel is necessary for the planned development, and then you come back at the next, at the next meeting, assumably, or you may want to have an extra month or however long to prepare your PD, and then when you come back for PD, they review, make the recommendation, and then that is when it goes to city council for approval.
Okay, so there's a, another step to planning and zoning with the PD document...
Yes.
Prior to advancing to council?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and Steve did a good job of just outlining the, the proposal here, again, looking to rezone an existing commercial property to allow for the development of approximately twenty-five townhomes. Similar architecture and theming that was presented in the, the previous case, so available for any questions regarding the, the property here on Washington.
Commissioners, any questions?
I know it's gonna be for the next one, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask now. It's just for the street access to the behind the spot. I'm just kinda curious why it's not a, a straight shot instead of having to go around to the end of the property as all.
Sure, so the way the, the properties, the multiple properties are currently developed is there's a series of curb cuts that exist today. So what we generally try to do is eliminate unnecessary curb cuts when you've got redevelopment.
Right.
Just to keep traffic moving along, especially on a, a state highway such as three seventy-seven. So we tried to pull the, the new proposed drive approaches as far as par as we could so that you can leave, you know, have some additional space in there to make those turning movements, but we did want to, you know, honor the easement that is in place so we're able to accommodate it.
Right.
But it, it just creates a much better streetscape, you know, for the development in the long run.
Okay. I might suggest you go to Central in the morning and watch the traffic.
Okay, noted.
Yeah.
Does the proximity to the school, Steve, have anything to do with designs here in light of the fact that it's straight across the street from the school?
Nope, no limitation or regulation restriction, lack of better terms for the location of this.
I mean, in terms of access to the school and, uh, from, from this property.
Yes, sir. So, again, as we get closer to the development process, we'll look at the traffic and make sure that the, the cuts onto Washington are indeed approved cuts and access points, but what we're seeing now, we're believing that this is a...
Well, I, I realize it's probably not in our bailiwick, but I was looking at possibly some type of guarded crossing of the street from the residence of this house, should they have children attending that school?
Yeah, just, if I, if I may, just off the page here, plan left, we're not far from an intersection. I believe it's a, a three-way stop, so it wouldn't be a far walk to there to then safely cross Washington to, to the, to the school, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezone request? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name's Ray Avery. My address is forty-four forty-five Newport Street in Grand Prairie, Texas, but we own the property at eight eleven West Washington. So we're not, we're not here to, to voice or opposition or support. We had sent in the list of questions to Steve, and it sounds like those will just be addressed, I guess, individually, so this is probably not the time to ask those, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do have your email and have gathered the information. I'll be replying to you on those questions. Reading your, your letter, I understood that you wanted to have the hearing, and then you may have additional questions after, so I was preparing to respond to you and have those answers to give you a comprehensive response...
Sure.
After the conclusion of this meeting, in the event that additional information arose.
Okay, sue, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Just one question, Steve. When will we hear back from our questions? I know you were nice enough to display them, but where's, where's the when we can get the response to those?
I will try to have those to you by the first part of next week. If possible, tomorrow, I'll be traveling, but I will try to respond to you if I have the opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, Commissioners. Can I get a motion? Well, we, we don't actually need a motion, do we? Because we're only, we're only listening and suggesting. Okay, so Commissioners, worried about traffic? Anything else?
I just...
Traffic in Chamberlain, those are our concerns.
Kids crossing the street is really my only big concern.
And I think, I think we just, that access to that mobile home park, we need to make sure that that's covered.
That stays, yeah.
Because they're landlocked otherwise.
Yeah, we don't, we don't make that a civil issue. We need to make sure that that's covered somehow in there.
Don't need to tie up the courts with that, which it looks like it's there, but then it comes around, we put a gate over here, then the next thing we go.
All right.
Yeah, try to keep people, try to keep people from suing people.
Keep people happy, yes. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on then. These are all related, so I guess we'll, we'll go through the motions. Case number PD two zero two zero one dash zero zero four, applicant Reese Flanagan of MMA LLC representing Troy Kunkel of five nine eight Westwood LLC is requesting a rezone of property located at eight five five and eight six five West Washington, parcel R two nine five eight one of City Edition Block sixty-two, lots four five six B of the city of Steenville, Eeroth County, Texas, from B two retail and commercial business to planned development. The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Formal action for the rezone request and approval of the planned development will be considered at a future meeting. Steve, I assume you have nothing, nothing further to add?
Nothing, nothing further to add. Understand, please, that the letters that were submitted were for the PD, which apply to all three of these parcels, so...
Correct, correct. Okay. If the developer doesn't have anything additional to add, we'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing again. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this? Anybody wish to speak against? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
No action.
No action, yeah, same. Thank you, Todd. I just, on a roll. So our same concerns apply. Traffic, yeah.
I, I do want to thank you for bringing this to us in advance. I know it seems odd, but this one, you have two people who've wanted to show up. Sometimes we have fifteen or twenty, so thank you very much for spending the time, because it gets so far down the path, and then residents want to say, hey, we say, hey, we've had three or four different. So thank you for spending the time to come down.
And thank you for the handouts.
Yeah, helps us.
It'll make the process a lot easier in the next steps, everybody, so thank you.
All right, continuing to take care of business. Case number PD two zero two, uh, two zero two one dash zero zero five, applicant Reese Flanagan of MMA LLC representing Troy Kunkel of five nine eight Westwood LLC is requesting a rezone of property located at eight seven three West Washington, parcel R two nine five eight zero of City Edition Block sixty-two, lot three of the city of Steenville, Eeroth County, from B two to PD. The applicant will present a conceptual plan. Formal action for the rezone request and approval of the planned development will be considered at a future meeting. Steve?
Nothing to add, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak against? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, your concerns remain the same, I assume?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay, sir. So you've heard what, what our concerns are. It's mostly traffic. It's a real tight area. You've got the school right across the street. La, that's just a bottleneck anyways, that, you know, Washington right there is real tight. So what we're really concerned about is people getting in and out and not contributing to that traffic problem. Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Moving on, case number RP two zero two one dash zero zero six. Property owner Taylor Knute of Harbin Street LLC is requesting a replat of property located at zero South Harbin Drive, parcel R seven three seven six three of Southside Edition Block nineteen, lot fifteen of the city of Steenville, Eeroth County, Texas. The applicant is requesting a approval of a preliminary replat for the planned development. Formal action for the rezone request and approval of the planned development will be considered at a future meeting. Steve?
Ma'am, on this, this particular case, it's probably very familiar to you at this point. As you know, the Knutes have came to the commission with a conceptual plan. We then came back with a PD. City council reviewed this on July twenty-one and approved the rezoning of the parcel to PD contingent upon the approval of preliminary plat. Now, point of clarification, we, we had a preliminary plat earlier. The plat was, we were looking for additional detail on the plat. The Knutes have worked with their engineering firm and with the city staff, and we, we have come up with a more detailed plat. We also have a, Mr. Knute put a planned development document together for you, along with some renderings, and so I feel like we have all the information that, that perhaps the commission felt we were short of on previous presentations, and staff will be using this as a, somewhat of a template moving forward to try to help with the PDs as they're submitted for your consideration. So the intended project will be for retail and commercial space, just as a refresher. There will be, on two point seven acres, and then the remainder of the property will be the planned development relating to townhomes. So the property is currently retail and commercial. Future land use is, is commercial, and again, we're wanting to rezone the larger portion of this property to PD and retain the B two zoning for the two point seven acres. And with that, we do have the information related to a PD for your review, what is required of a PD for approval, and then, if I may, I'm gonna go ahead and jump into the next document. We have the map illustrating where this is with the street names as requested, and we have the, let me jump to the elevation. I'm sorry, that's probably not titled correctly. This should be the floor plan, proposed floor plan, and so again, that's on your back screen if you need to see that. It is included in your packet. We do have the elevation rendering included, front and back and side. We have the timeline, which they have presented. This is, this was presented on an earlier submittal, but we have added additional detail thanks to Mr. Taylor Knute, and then we have the development plan. This is the, as we look at the plat, a little more detail than what we had provided, and if you look at this closely, it gets down to the level of where a proposed monument sign will be, an existing tree cluster, so we've gone through quite the extensive amount of work with the developer and his engineer to make sure that we give you the information that you need. The development plan that Mr. Knute put together is, again, on the back... The development plan that Mr. Knute put together is, uh, again, on the back screen, and it's, uh, it mentions, uh, basically gives you an overview that it's going to be fifty attached single-family units divided into nine different buildings, uh, gives you information regarding the floor plan, the square footage, uh, two-car attached, uh, front-loading garages. Uh, he goes into detail about the lot development regulation, uh, twelve-fifty or thirteen-sixty square feet with eleven-hundred-and-fifty square, uh, floor area, including the garages, so he's provided us detail. Uh, he's recognized the landscape regulations and has stated what they will be doing to comply with the landscape, but, regulations. He speaks about the parking and provides information on the parking and what, uh, type of restrictions will be included in the parking, and then he also provides some information on the architectural development standards, um, for your review as well. And, uh, as we move into the next document, the Knutes have gone to the extent of providing us what a monument sign will look like on this development, and then also the elevation rendering, um, uh, not just the diagram itself, but to show us, you know, what they believe it would look like, uh, in, you know, real life, so to speak. And then also, uh, this, uh, calls out for some screening fencing, uh, from the townhomes and the actual retail commercial, uh, portion of the development, and so they have, uh, give us, given us an illustration of what they believe the fencing will be, uh, like on this particular, uh, project. Lastly, is the, uh, most recent submittal of the, of the preliminary plat, and with that, ma'am, it's staff's recommendation that we, we accept this and that we, we move forward and allow the Knutes to get started on this project, and they are here. I believe they have their engineer with them as well, um, if there are any questions, so...
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Would developers care to add anything, or do you feel that was sufficient?
Uh, thanks, Steve. Fantastic job of, um, filling everyone in on the next level of detail that we didn't have with us at the last meeting. Um, I'm happy to field any questions if anyone has. Our, our engineer, Tal, could not make it tonight, um, unfortunately, but, um...
Sorry, I thought I saw him.
Like Steve said, I'm, I'm happy to answer anything.
Thank you.
What, for all intents and purposes, that's about as accurate as it's, as much information as we can provide on how everything's gonna lay out still, so...
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Beautiful, thank you.
These are all gonna be rentals?
No, no. We're, uh, we're...
Okay.
As a developer, we're building and selling them as individual units.
Okay.
Thank you for your detail. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Look forward to seeing them.
All right, let's go ahead and, um, open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor of this, uh, replat? Correct, we are doing a preliminary replat?
Yes.
Anybody wish to speak against? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
A move that we recommend a council approval for RP two-zero-two-zero, or two-one, zero-zero-six.
Six.
Recommend, uh, to council approval, correct?
Yes.
Any need for discussion? I'm happy, I think this looks really beautiful, thorough, great job, guys.
Appreciate that.
All right, we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to council, uh, approval of this, uh, preliminary, the preliminary replat? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, you're off to council. The ball is rolling. Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, the final item on our agenda tonight is zoning ordinance revisions to R-three multifamily in consideration of draft zoning district known as R-two-point-five.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, staff is asking that you, uh, the commission review the proposed ordinances and recommend approval to the city council. This is to revise certain, uh, certain portions of the zoning code, uh, in regards to the R-three zoning requirements and to create a new zoning classification for R-two-point-five. Recent applications for rezoning have brought a little, um, I guess, reservations and concerns from some of our local residents as we, um, bring these, uh, R-three developments in for consideration, and when we started looking real closely at the R-three requirements, the permitted uses did allow for some pretty, um, extensive type uses in those areas. And so, the council asked, um, Development Services Committee to look into this and come up with a way that maybe we could, um, look at some of the trending house styles, townhomes, patio homes, things of that nature, that could be integrated into these existing areas without it being as, as maybe as invasive, lack of a better term, as an R-three, uh, typical property would be. So, uh, the commission, uh, the committee met and, uh, brought forward, uh, some things for consideration on these ordinance revisions, um, and if we look on the staff report, A through H, and one of these is duplicated, so it should be A through G, uh, but basically what we're accomplishing with this, assuming it's approved, is that we're removing the townhome requirements from the R-three classification, um, and so R-three will be kind of its own type of, of development, with the exception of those additional permitted uses that I mentioned are a little bit more invasive than your typical townhome. Uh, we have a clear distinction between a townhome development and an R-three, so we have those at fourteen and twenty-four, and we specify that in the ordinance. The R-two-point-five will allow for single-family and townhome dwellings as well as duplexes, but the duplexes are going to be at a little bit higher, uh, lot dimension requirement than the single-family, so this will allow us to address the patio homes if they, uh, were to, if a developer were to bring a patio home district to the city, it'd be a good fit in this R-two-point-five. Um, duplexes would require still the, the seventy-five-by-one-hundred lot dimension to avoid putting too many units on, on the acreage per density. We established a process that in the R-two-point-five, if the developer is proposing something outside of those restrictions of the R-two-point-five zoning, it would actually come to P and Z and then to council, uh, for discussion and consideration and approval, and not necessarily force them into a PD, because we know these PDs can sometimes get pretty, pretty involved and pretty complicated. Um, so, this would give us a way to deal with those at kind of a, a, I guess, a lesser level, uh, maybe a more effective level as far as getting the development on the books a little more quickly. We looked at the parking requirements for R-three. R-three will generally be for, uh, of course, we know student housing is in high demand right now, so we're, we're wanting to make sure on those particular properties that the parking is per unit bedroom, necess, uh, and not necessarily the unit itself. So, there's been, I, I believe the intention there is to make sure that we have adequate parking, uh, but the way the ordinance is written and, and interpreted now, we can sometimes fall short on those R-three developments in, in our opinion. So, we, we recommended, uh, that there be an increased parking requirement for R-three, um, and then, uh, establish that a R-three zoning, um, again, is related parking, go to G now, please. The R-three zoning will generally relate to managed properties on a single parcel, similar to what we saw with five-five-five Dublin tonight, whereas a townhome will generally be individually platted and usually owner-occupied and individually owned. And so, that will, again, allow for a distinction between the R-two-point-five and R-three. And then finally, the R-three zoning will not have a site plan review process, um, as I mentioned earlier with the R-two-point-five. The R-three, if they have variations from those requirements, will still go through the board of adjustment, uh, for a variance request. And so, uh, just providing a little bit of a, a, I guess, a, a delineation between R-two-point-five and R-three, so we can, uh, try to be a little more development-friendly on these projects. Moving to, uh, the next documents, and this is, uh, really at the, um, based on the desires of the commission, but I have in, in your document, I can go through this, uh, step by step, I've given you an overview of what it accomplishes, but basically, this is the working document that we had, uh, at the committee level, and it shows you where we made additions or deletions in the document. And then also, uh, on the following document, um, the integrated housing ordinance, this is basically where we took the townhome information out of the R-three and created a separate standalone ordinance for the R-two-point-five, and we included, uh, the information, uh, specifically for the R-two-point-five zoning that I, I summarized earlier. And then, the last two documents are actually the ordinances that the, uh, city attorney put together, um, and so this will actually be the document that, that if adopted will become the city ordinance, uh, that we, um, refer to when we have these developments come into town. So, wanted to give you a kind of a high-level overview, walk you through it as succinctly as I could, but I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, we do believe this is going to be a, a good fit for the community and one that will maybe help our residents who are concerned about their neighborhoods and have some very, uh, very nice neighborhoods, that they will understand that we too want to protect that, that heritage that they have. So, with that, ma'am, uh, any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Uh, excuse me, you mentioned patio homes. Do you have a definition for patio home?
Yes, uh, so...
Is that the same thing as garden home?
Using that term recently, just a gar, a, a home with a much smaller lot dimension than the typical R-one, which is a seventy-five-by-one-hundred, and so, we're seeing, um, trending now, uh, housing choices are wanting smaller responsibilities. The, the day of, uh, quarter-acre, half-acre, one-acre lot seems to be kind of, that desire's still there, but there's a huge desire for people to have smaller areas, smaller lots for their responsibility, smaller homes, and so this would allow us to accommodate those uses if a developer brought such, you know, development to, to any type of use like that to town. Uh, so, I think this gives us a mechanism that would not necessarily put them into a PD, but allow them to fit into this special R-two-point-five.
Questions?
So, it's just not as dense as an R-three, but it's more dense than an R-two, and then more, more suited for the, uh, homeowner than a renter?
Uh, yes, sir, that's, that's it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Pat, patio homes, though, are multifamily?
No.
Or is a patio home a, uh, a, uh, tiny house?
A tiny house. So, mixed between a townhome and the, and the Sully Court over there.
Small lots, small yard.
Smaller lots.
The, the house itself does not...
Some cities are referred to as zero-lot line homes, uh, so this, this would accommodate just that type of development that may come to town, and if, if they could, again, if they can fit within the parameters of the R-two-point-five, then we can approve it as is. If they don't fit within those parameters, then it does have to come to P and Z for review and then to council for approval as well. So, um, your recommendation and then to council for approval. So, what we're trying to accomplish is just, just give us another way to, to accommodate these housing choices, uh, without opening the door for an R-three project, which I think you heard in previous cases, you approve it for R-three, and all of a sudden, it, it, it may not become an apartment complex, because now it can be any of these permitted uses, and I think that's where we were seeing some of the, the concerns from our residences. This is a, this is a bigger gate that we're opening than, than what it may seem like on the surface.
Sure.
Just, um, logistic, logistically, why, I mean, why two-point-five? Why not just have a two that kind of includes?
R-two is currently zoning for duplexes.
duplexes, and so that's strictly duplexes?
This is, yes, so, uh, two, two-family homes, so we're, we're try, two, yeah, two structure.
Gotcha.
So, we're trying to, the R-two-point-five was what was suggested, and it seemed to be, uh...
Yeah.
...appropriate, given our other zoning classifications.
Um, on, regarding the bed, the, uh, parking spaces for multifamily?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so now it's two spaces per rented bed, per bedroom?
Uh, we, so typically, what we're seeing a lot now is when a, a student housing property comes to town, you mentioned, it, it came up earlier, there's eighty-three units.
Mm-hmm.
Well, eighty-three units times two is a hundred-and-sixty-six parking spaces, but they're truly renting now, sometimes upwards of four to five times those eighty-three, they're renting the bedroom to college students.
To city drive, with the four people.
So, there's maybe four people in a bedroom.
So, that number, uh, suddenly is not really adequate, because not only do you have the student, you have the students' guests that show up, and so the parking becomes a, a problem, and with the way it's in the ordinance now, it's, it's two times the number of units, not two times the number of beds.
Gotcha.
And so, we're trying to, trying to find a way to work around that and, and address the parking issue.
Okay.
What, let, let me ask you a question. Mustang Ranch over there, they rent everything but a bed to college students, and you don't even get a choice of your roommate. But, uh, what, what zoning classification does that come under?
That, um, apparently is an R-three, because that's, that's what zoning was on the books at the time.
Okay.
And, as I was just stating, that, that seems to be a business model, a lot for student housing. My daughter and my son both attended A and M, one's still there, um, and that's exactly the type of, of contract we got into. They, they rent the bedroom, and if you can fill up the whole unit, then bring your roommates with you, and if not, you get assigned a roommate, and so, um, that's a, a pretty common business model with student housing.
I see, okay. I, I'd never seen it before.
All right, so what do we, what do we do going forward from here? Do we need to do a, a public hearing?
We're, we're asking, uh, for this, ma'am, I believe it's just a recommendation, uh, let's, well, let's, it is, uh, an ordinance, and it is coming before the P and Z, so, uh, let's go ahead and, and move forward with the public hearing if you don't mind.
All right. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing for all the people here tonight. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this? Anybody wish to speak against? No? Okay, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion so that we can discuss or vote.
I make a motion that we, uh, recommend to city council that this ordinance be added to the books.
Um, just a point of, uh, order here, this is, actually, we have a proposed ordinance and a, uh, for the R-two-point-five, and then we have revisions to the R-point-three, uh, so if you act on that separately or together, just please make sure that we address both.
All right. Bruce, do you want to amend your motion?
I'll, I'll amend my motion that both provisions be recommended for approval.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Y'all need to discuss? We feel good about this?
Oh, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of recommending to council approval of both the, uh, new ordinance for R-two-point, two-point-five and the, uh, revisions to R-three? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Good news, guys, it's going forward to council.
All right. Thank you all very much.
All right.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Steve, for...
Yeah, hard work.
For all of the hard work that you've put in on this, and, uh, you've obviously given it a whole lot of thought, and it seems, uh, uh, seems like a solid improvement to, uh, for people doing business for the city.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it, no, thank you.
It doesn't address mobile homes and industrials, but, hey, we'll head in that direction someday, you know?
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, sir.